Are we ready to?
Yep.
Thank you, okay. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Hubbard's and Select Board together at six thirty-one on May fifth. Please note that Select Board member Heather Monroe will not be with us tonight. As always, these meetings are digitally recorded, so everybody please be respectful of each other as you speak as well as as you listen. Pass it over to you.
All right, we got a laundry list of stuff just this weekend alone. So, uh, May tenth, which is Saturday, we have the kids fishing derby at the Rod and Gun. It's from eight to eleven AM, and they're looking for kids under the age of twelve. There is a list of rules of what you can and can't use, so please see the Rod and Gun Facebook page or the Rod and Gun itself for more details on what you can and can't use, but again, that is this Saturday from eight to eleven. Also this Saturday, we have the spring art show and plant sale from ten to noon here in a combo between the senior center and the library basement. And that's being done by the senior center, and again, it's an art show and plant sale from nine to noon. And then across the street at, depending on what you wanna call it, the First Meeting House, also known as Unitarian Church, they're having their spring yard sale on May tenth from nine to one. You can find breads and crafts, and I think they have like a white elephant thing, and they got all kinds of good stuff over there.
The church people themselves in there?
Yes, 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 yes. Um, it's their a- annual spring yard sale, um, nine to one. Then we're gonna hop to May twenty-fifth. The Rod and Gun is having a chicken barbecue. You can buy your tickets for fifteen dollars. Um, the food is actually served at two, but they will be having fun things during the day, like cornhole and stuff like that activities. So hit up again the Rod and Gun for that, and that is May twenty-fifth, again fifteen dollars, and the food is served at two. Memorial Day Parade is May twenty-sixth, starts at eleven AM. If you are marching in the parade, please be at the rec field at least fifteen minutes in advance. Try to be there at ten thirty, 'cause they like everyone to be lined up well in advance. But the parade's gonna come down Main Street, they're going to do the ceremony on the common, per usual, and I'm guessing there's gonna be ice cream and stuff after, I don't wanna speak tor- okay, ice cream afterwards over here at the senior center. And again, that is Memorial Day, May twenty-sixth, starting at eleven AM.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, yeah, it's always Monday.
Okay.
Okay. Um, then we're gonna come up to May twenty-ninth, and we're going to have Comet Pond Cottages and More presented by, and I just like saying it like a a little flair, um, presented by the Historical Society, and that is at the Williamsville Chapel at seven PM. They're gonna be going over, you know, the, how Comet Pond came about with all the cottages and the more. So again, that is May twenty-ninth at seven PM at Williamsville Chapel. Uh, the townwide yard sale is May thirty-first from eight to two. If you want to be on the map, you're going to email Parks, and it's going to be Hubbardston MA Parks at gmail dot com. I'm gonna say it again for everybody, the tens and tens of views that we have at home. Hubbardston MA Parks at gmail dot com to get on the map. Um, I'm going with, the maps are gonna be located at senior center, per usual, and again, it is May thirty-first from eight to two. Please email in advance to get on the map. Um, all the money goes between the senior center and the Parks Department, which both usually need money because we're broke. Um, anyway, moving on. Annual Town Meeting is June second at seven PM at Hubbardson Center School. Please, everyone attend, there's going to be good stuff, we're going over it tonight. So again, June second at seven PM at Hubbardson Center School, Annual Town Meeting. The Hubbardson Fair is June seventh from nine to two at the rec field, the rain date is the eighth. Um, I have a laundry list of things going on that day, it's gonna be a good fun day, and it's not going to rain, so we won't need the rain day hopefully. But it's June seventh from nine to two, um, lots of fun activities there, lots of handmade local small businesses, music, food trucks, all the good stuff. All right, then we go to June eighth, which is a Sunday, the Rod and Gun Golf Tournament. It is at Quail Hollow Golf Course in Oakham, there's a bunch of different Rod and Gun entities, um, doing a tournament. If you'd like to have a group be in the tournament, please contact the Rod and Gun, but that is taking part on June eighth at eight AM. And then, finally, we have our Annual Town Elections on June tenth. Please show up at Hubbardson Center School Gym from seven AM to eight PM to vote for your favorite candidate. Not that we have anybody running, but we have plenty of options to write in, so feel free to pick a free space and put your name down. Sorry, but again, Annual Town Elections was June tenth, it's seven AM to eight PM at Hubbardson Center School, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other announcements or reports at this particular point in time from everybody? Any questions? All right, seeing them, we'll move on, we have a Green Communities presentation to be presented, would you introduce yourself, sir, and?
Mr. Ami, everyone, I'm Zach K from the Monmouth City Regional Planning Commission, and this is Karen Chapman. She, I'm a regional planner, and Karen is the Director of Planning and Development.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We have prepared a PowerPoint presentation, I have it both on my laptop right now, which has an HDMI and a USB. So either for this.
Uh-oh.
Oh, yeah, there it is. Perfect. Yes, I'll find it, I'll just, all right, review the comments I have in here, if that's all right with everyone.
Can't see it all.
Do you wanna sit here?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
You can't see the screen, but you can see it on yours.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank you all for Karen doing it.
Is there a way to get it all on the screen?
Make control and scroll at the same time?
I can't see.
You wanna borrow my glasses?
No.
You know, as you approach four, your eyes are getting worse.
Thank you.
Sorry about the other.
Yeah, the new building looks nice.
We don't have any.
I couldn't get in though.
We don't have a meeting space in there.
We're working on it.
Yeah, so, I'm standing. So Hubbardston became a green community in FY twen- twenty. Their bas- your baseline year is FY twenty nineteen. There were, um.
This is when we became a green community.
So our team at MRPC is myself, Kayla Cress, who's our GIS IT analyst, and Zach. Zach and Kayla do all your annual reports and stuff like that. I do competitive grants. We also do, um, administrative work for, um, your grants as well. And then the team here in, in Hubbardston is Nathan, obviously, and Kevin Clark gets involved a lot with the projects as the MMPTW. So the reason we're here today is to review the five criteria to become a green community and what your progress is towards your twenty percent reduction in energy usage. So you, um, you complied with criteria one, which is as of right sighting for renewable energy, R and D for renewable energy, generation of renewable energy, manufacturing of renewable energy parts and stuff, and so you allow for that in your district. Alternative Energy Research and Development, you also allow manufacturing facilities. Criteria two is expediting permitting, which says that if anything is applied for under criteria one, you have to give a permit within twelve months and, and that falls under your site plan review, so that works out. And then criteria three is really the meat of your criteria, where when you became designated, you had to fill out an energy reduction plan of how you were gonna reduce twenty percent energy use through buildings, vehicles, and open space, streetlights, water and sewer. And so, um, Zach is gonna go through all of the data with you.
So in the following chart here, we can see our annual reductions year to year in total use, which is MMPTU, metric million British thermal unit, I think, um, which is just a standardized kind of way of comparing energy use there. Um, as we can see for FY twenty point four, we've seen some massive kind of reductions for you. Um, forty-one point two percent reduction in building energy, which is quite, quite st- the, you know, big reduction there overall in comparison to five point one or five point two in past years. There's a forty-eight point four percent reduction in open space, a thirty-six point six percent reduction in streetlight and traffic, and then a twen- ten point four percent reduction in vehicle usage there. This is also looking at weather normalized data only. There's two data sets that they'll use, both on weather normalized and then on a standard version, which basically is looking at your data without kind of correlating the weather patterns that we saw throughout the winter. For a lot of people, it is challenging with the net weather normalized, because we'll do your data upload, it's just one piece of data. Um, so oftentimes, with the weather normalized versus non-weather normalized, it can be quite skewed. I can't really say for certain, I haven't looked at the non-weather normalized. They will kind of use both for, I think, making that determination of the twenties point, twenty percent. So I couldn't say that this is, you know, a definite you're at the twenty percent right now, but it's something that they'll audit and kind of look at for you and do work. Great, moving on, we have our energy conservation measures, so these are the projects kind of done around. Oh, sorry. Awesome, so moving on, we have our energy conservation measures. These are kind of the projects around town that are aimed at, you know, reducing energy and overall making your buildings more efficient. The graph provided is looking at your historical EUI. Um, EUI is KBTU by square feet. KBTU is kilo British thermal unit, which is another kind of aggregate unit for comparing energy there. It's looking at the square footage of the buildings, how much energy every square footage is essentially using there, which allows us to compare buildings and kind of look at the efficiency. Overall, with this graph here, it gives an aggregate view, so it's everything kind of combined together there. But, and we can see kind of a general trend of increasing efficiency with the buildings, especially in twenty twenty-four, it would seem. Um, which is interesting, because it doesn't seem like there is, you know, a many massive projects at that point, but there's heat pumps at the Jonas Clark Public Library in funding year twenty-three and twenty-four. It seems like that is still active to our knowledge.
Yes.
Um, there's interior and exterior LED lighting retrofit at the Hubbardson Center School in funding year twenty-three. We had a water pump replacement and VFD additions at the Hubbardson Center School as well in FY twenty-three. And then it looks like back in FY twenty-two, there's reset and optimization of all the outside air controls and AC at the Hubbardson Center School. And all of those things kind of combined do give us, you know, these longer term kind of reductions that we'll see as things kind of compound for you.
May I ask a question, please?
Yeah, definitely.
So when, who throws all these numbers together? You, you guys do this, or somebody does the numbers for you?
We do the collection of the data, so we basically reach out to the town offices and we ask, you know, how much oil was used this year?
Yeah.
What did you guys get from, um, you know, National Grid or anyone like that? Fortunately, a lot of the energy companies will actually upload for us, so we don't have to really worry about it too much. But like private oil, private propane, we do have to actually like import ourselves and make sure, you know, that those counts are accurate.
Yeah. So I don't wanna slow you down, but now, like, let's take the center school for instance. Um, I don't know the amount of pupils in there, but I know each pupil puts off BTUs, right, for heat purposes. Does that account, does that get accounted into your equation?
Not necessarily, we're really just looking at like the fuel that you're paying for.
So fuel electricity.
Yeah. Fuel electricity, that sort of thing.
That's good, all right, I didn't know if you used the human body as a heat source.
No, it's not that, uh, that scientific.
'Cause it is a heat source.
No, it's a, it's a database system called Mass Energy Insight, and the.
Yeah, so it's taking all the numbers and putting it again.
The utilities upload the electric and natural gas automatically. Cocaine, gasoline, diesel, and oil get manually uploaded by us.
And the town does work with them each year, each year right around Christmas, I can usually count on hearing from, from that.
How are you?
I bother the chief and.
Sorry, whoever gets emails from me, I apologize, they're quite often in the season.
They're gonna be the same questions every year, as long as you're a green community.
This year we were spicy, last minute, I was like, hey, did you know we bought a building? And suddenly everyone's like, no, we didn't.
Nope.
Until next year.
That'll, that'll, um, so if you want to add that to your baseline, we'd have to do a supplemental energy reduction plan, if you wanna do any projects at that building.
Have to get on that.
Okay.
All right. I'll call you soon.
Yes.
Yeah. Awesome, so moving on here, our next slide, we'll have our greatest energy use buildings. Um, so in FY twenty twenty-four, municipal operations used a total of eight thousand four hundred and nine MMPTUs of energy. Um, it seems like our, you know, most energy-using building were the Slade Town Offices, followed by the fire station, followed by the Jonas Clark Public Library and the highway garage and town office. Um, interestingly enough, I have percentages here, Jonas Clark Public Library used five percent of town energy. Uh, town offices used about four percent of ta- of town energy. The fire station used three percent of town energy, and the highway garage and office used about three percent of town energy.
What do you mean?
Is the school not supposed to be on there?
Uh, the school is not included in this because it's gonna have a separate account.
Okay.
Just because energy, I think, for that is pooled between towns, correct?
What do you mean by town energy? 'Cause those numbers were very low, they equaled like twenty. And I would imagine that we would have to pay for or use one hundred percent of municipal energy.
With everything else kind of combined, such as vehicles, um, it does, you know, I think vehicles tend to take up a good portion of the, the total energy used, such as like DPW vehicles in the winter, um, and then police vehicles just throughout the year.
Right, that was where I was getting lost, I didn't realize that it was a broader picture than just the energy usage, electricity.
Yeah, this is not. With the percentages I'm saying here, that is aggregate for like everything used.
Yeah.
Great, i- if there's any questions, happy to answer them, otherwise we'll move on to highest emissions. Um, in FY twenty twenty-four, there were six hundred and ten MT CO2Es, million tons of carbon dioxide equivalent emitted through municipal operations. Um, so we have our highest emissions here, this is also, all of these projections will be weather normalized, just to keep it accurate throughout the presentation here. Um, so we have our town o- offices slayed, taking number one yet again, followed by fire station number one, Jonas Clark Public Library, and then the highway and garage offices coming in last there.
We've really been working on minimizing that number at the Slade Building, I think next year you'll notice a big difference.
Possibly.
We no longer operate out of this building.
Maybe not, though, we had a call.
Where's the oil for the library and the highway?
Sorry?
Where's the oil for the library and the highway?
We did not have any reports of an oil.
Their heating systems, the oil, the library.
And I can't, there's no way the highway is electric.
No.
We didn't get the data.
Okay.
Great, that one we can definitely get data for, update and, uh, report back with. And we have our highest energy use intensity, obviously without the, uh, the data there for the highway op- um, it is gonna be skewed, but the, uh, total energy use intensity is going to be calculated dividing the building's annual total energy consumption by the energy sh- building's la- total square footage. Um, so going through the list here, our least energy efficient building would be fire station number one right now, followed by town offices, followed by the Jonas Clark Public Library, and then last, right now, because of the, that oil, would be the highway garage and office, but I would not be suspecting that that will stay that way.
Well, same with the library, there's no like this.
And like.
Same with the library, yeah.
Yeah, well, library, the garage, that oil's gotta, yeah. I bet, I betcha the fire station drops down a whole bunch.
No.
No, why would it?
Because if they didn't calculate any of the oil, that's the only way that they've been heating in the library and the.
The DPW.
And the DPW.
The infinescent.
So it's not in there, so it, it's gonna be skewed, yeah. Those change those numbers.
There are no violations, so moving on here, we do have the fuel efficient vehicle policy, which is another criteria of the, uh, Green Communities program. There are no bo- violations of fuel efficient, um, efficient vehicle policy vehicles this year. Um, no transfers of vehicles between departments were noted. Um, and it does seem as though the town added two vehicles to the fleet for FY twenty-four. Um, and then two fuel inefficient vehicles were also retired. The chart here just shows the total energy use for both oil and diesel throughout the years. Um, we may, or I'm sorry, this shows for diesel and gasoline, so both of our main car fuels here. Um, we generally would like to see a trend of this dropping off year to year, but it is really hard with your town having the baseline of FY twenty nineteen, which is like right before the COVID times, where things kind of got really skewed in, in fuel usage. So it will be kind of more cha- a little bit more challenging to get, beat those twenty nineteen numbers initially here, but still something to kind of reach for. Another thing to keep in mind as well, um, is that there will be a kind of transfer for the police vehicles being non-exempt in FY twenty-six, um, where police vehicles could be, you know, non-fuel efficient, um, in the past, but starting in FY twenty-six, those vehicles will now be counted normally for you. So something to kind of keep in mind while, while looking at new police vehicles. Great, moving on to criteria five, we have our scratch code compliance, so scratch code is the, uh, general building code for energy efficiency there. And being a green community, you agree to the middle scratch code there. If you were to be a, uh, climate leader community, you would actually be using the specialized code. We always like to include it, just so you can see it and get a little bit of inspiration there. Um, but overall, there was no scratch code enforcement, um, or, uh, enforcement violations reported, so you're all good to go on that. Great, moving on to our highlights here. Since the baseline of FY nineteen, the town has seen a twenty point six reduction in energy use. Uh, that is not calculating that fuel that is, or oil that was missing there, so that number probably will go, uh, down a little bit, I would suspect. Hubbardson's building energy use decreased by forty-one point two percent, explained by the, the missing oil. Um, the streetlight traffic energy use decreased by thirty-six point six percent, great to see. Vehicle energy use decreased by ten point four percent, and then open space energy use decreased by forty-eight point four percent. The open space is a rather small count for you, though, just using only, uh, generally lights and like, you know, athletic field lights and such. So sometimes it, you'll see just with less field use in a certain year, that it goes down and then goes back up by fifty percent, so that is something to keep in mind. Um, overall, the least energy efficient municipally owned building was fire station number one, as well as the second highest emissions and highest energy consumption. And second highest energy consumption, sorry. The greatest energy consuming building was the Slade Town Hall Offices, as well as the highest emitting building. And then the Jonas Clark Public Library ranked third for pretty much everything, but still is probably a good target overall for a lot of, uh, you know, the ECM projects that could be, uh, be applicable, such as like weather roofing or any of the HVAC if it does have, you know, a heating system in it.
We're trying to do it.
It's steam heat.
Steam heat.
Yeah, you, you're not gonna change anything, uh, unless you change a little.
A whole entire system, gotcha.
We're working on it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, the heat pumps will help, but then you're paying the electric bill, so.
So moving on here, possibilities are endless. There are green communities grants for up to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, right now, if you do have a environmental justice, um, population in your community, there are expert grants for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then there are also multi-year decarbonization grants for projects for up to five hundred thousand dollars. If you're interested, there are also opportunities for troubleshooting and kind of just getting the ball rolling on solar installations in town as well. So if you're thinking about, you know, any small scale solar anywhere, definitely reach out to Green, Green Communities, and they can kind of help you on the grant side of things.
Can you explain what an environmental justice location is, please?
And then the environmental justice population is a population from the twenty twenty census, um, that at that time was deemed to be in a environmentally degraded area, whether that be from income, environmental damage in the area, or other kind of population characteristics.
So it's, it's low income, it's minority, either or, or both. So I don't think Hubbardston has any.
And education as well, if you have like a low education in your area.
There's a map online, you just Google EJ map, and you can see where all the greens are.
Okay, thank you.
Great, going, leading on to, uh, climate leader communities, if you guys are a high achieving community, this could be a, a great program for you. You have to be an existing green communities, uh, community in good standings. You have to establish or maintain a committee to advise, um, continue and lead your energy reduction and climate activities. Um, we asked, they asked that you commit to municipal decarbonization by twenty fifty, formulate a roadmap for the implementation of that, and then you have to implement the, uh, zero, or zero emissions vehicle first, vehicle policy, and also use that extremely specialized stretch code that we were looking at. Um, every three years, you're required to also recertify, so that's gonna take a kind of new plan for you, the updated cart, decarbonization roadmap, and then also demonstrating that you are meeting the, uh, certification requirement, as well as implementing community engagement, kind of climate leader practices as well. This allows you to get further funding, um, through the best practices. Um, you, you can get municipal building electric patient and decarbonization grants, seed funding for municipal clean energy and climate coordinators, and support for onsite solar plus storage as well. Um, so yeah, really great opportunities there, definitely something to look at and discuss if it's, you know, a good fit for you as a town. Great.
Thank you, Zach.
Proud, thank you, everyone. Any questions or?
Can I, yeah, I got a question. On page four of your presentation, there's a couple of drastic anomalous reductions for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And I think we explained the building one by not including the DPW and another building into the analysis there, but what, how do we account for, or what might account for the drastic drop, the percent change in open space?
As I was saying, as it's a kind of low energy use account right now, it, only having thirty-five MMPTUs versus, you know, if you look at a normal year for buildings, it has like around a thousand five hundred or a thousand four hundred, I should say. Um, so it doesn't take much to have a drastic drop there. Even, you know, like a third of your energy use, if you just had a little bit, a slightly reduced schedule for field usage or something like that, that could sometimes.
I'm going with they didn't run the sprinklers.
There you go.
'Cause the sprinkler system, I don't think they ran it at all last year, 'cause it needs, wasn't held, yeah.
It needs a pump, needs a pump.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All that money, that's what it was.
We can definitely check though, and then just double, check on the data there and make sure that everything is accurate.
Yeah, I think the pump's been down for a couple of years, right?
Yeah, the sprinklers is.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, so it should've been a two, like a two-year decline.
Yeah, directly, 'cause that's the only thing that would. Yeah, there's something else like that.
So Karen, my question for you, and I could've emailed this, but since you're here, uh, we are not going to qualify for any grant funding round until such time as that project is complete.
Correct. Do we think it's not gonna happen?
Hey, I think it's gonna happen, but what am I supposed to do, call Congress? Like, we can only push so hard, and I'm trying, and Patricia's trying, and you guys are trying, like.
Call Peter Durant.
We can't get National Grid to, to really move, move faster.
But install the whole.
Like, we're not even at the hearing phase yet. Like, I could understand if we were in sort of a queue, but we're not even at queue phase, and it's been a year, and it was brought up today, half jokingly, half not, like, oh, is that money gonna get clawed back? Like, I hope not, and I wouldn't see a, a situation where it would be, but those are serious considerations, like, I just, I don't want to leave a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the table just so that when somebody's looking for, for money, they can say, oh, they didn't use it, and so, I know that's not a super realistic possibility, but it's still something that I'm willing to bring up in the name of getting this to move faster.
Right.
So, 'cause I want to apply for more things and be able to get forty-eight gardener on there too, because the electricity bills are egregious. And, but, we can't do anything until such time as that's fixed, so I would appreciate it if you could aid me in at least making some noise.
I mean, are there any stipulations in the contract? I mean, I'm sure there's a time constraint, but it, these are things that beyond our control as a town, right?
It's not their fault either.
Right, I agree, but, I mean, there should be some mechanism to extend the end range of the grant.
Oh, no one has brought that up, like.
No, I know, but I'm just saying, it could run into that, if they drag their feet another two years.
Usually it's a three-year contract.
Yeah, maybe about a year and some change into it.
Yeah, we're about halfway.
It's just waiting, National Grid.
And I also, it, I feel real silly going into a second summer of, hey, look at these cool heat pumps that don't work, like.
Yeah, that's no fun. I'll see what I can rouse up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Karen and her group are also working with us on a couple of other grant projects right now in sort of the sustainability area, so I look forward to working with them down the road, and thank you for coming out tonight.
No problem. Um so the grant that we got that helps support your green communities is ending at the end of May and we're applying for a new one. So I'll be emailing to see if you wanna join in again.
We do.
Okay. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
I look forward to the new building.
So what, can I ask one last question on the decarbonization by twenty fifty? Is that a, is that a state mandated thing?
That's the state climate.
Now, for a town, we 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 don't have any other infrastructure other than oil and electricity, that's what we use, right? So how can you decarbonize? I mean, but as far as I'm concerned, you put on all heat pumps, you're still burning oil and gas and coal, big beautiful coal, to make this electricity, so how can you really decarbonize if we decarbonize as a town, but you you get, you have these power plants burning all these fossil fuels or whatever, to produce electricity, doesn't one hand kind of kill the other?
Yes, and I agree with your question, I've been saying that.
Okay. Nobody, nobody listen.
Like, you wanna electrify, but how do you make the old?
Okay, so I just wanted to know where it's coming from, so I know it's not you guys.
Yeah, it's the state.
It's the mandates that are pushed forward from the state. Maybe we'll change it to.
Maybe.
It's just, I mean, twenty fifty is a long ways away, but it's not, it's twenty five years from now.
Yeah, I thought nineteen eighty one was a short time.
Good year, nineteen eighty one.
Thank you.
Mike, Karen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, um we will now officially uh open the uh public hearing. For the annual uh town meeting, um Nate, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um thank you to those in attendance tonight, chief, if you would like to join us, I think now would be an opportune time. Mike, thank you for being the public here at the public hearing. To those watching at home, either on YouTube later or on Facebook right now, thank you very much. If you have any questions about the things we are going over, feel free to put them in the comments, we are paying attention to those. In addition to that statement, I would like it to be known that I cannot get the screens that we are looking at here this evening to show on Facebook Live without some additional connectivity platforms that we are working on. But for the time being, it is linked in the comments. Both the annual town meeting warrant hearing, presentation slides, the budget, there's plenty to keep you busy in in the comments. So if you read that and you want to ask questions, feel free to call my office or any of the town offices whenever. And we will do our best to get you the answers that you seek. With that, we will start the second of three of, well, of two, two at the select board meeting and a third one at the senior center. Annual town meeting hearing. We already went over this, but annual town meeting is the legislative process of the town. The select board is the executive and runs the day-to-day operations, whereas annual town meeting or town meeting, the legislative body aids in the legislative process by being the purse strings of the community and the policy deciding factor in most, if not all, of the major decisions made by a town. What you will be voting on, there are several different categories that we have on the agenda. One is the consent agenda, which is routine articles, either mandated by the state or town charter, things that we get done in one vote. The FY twenty six operating budget, a few capital projects, the Community Preservation Act projects, namely a forty thousand dollar restoration to the library basement and public safety and planning initiatives. And additionally, a fun one, which will get its own presentation and project, a historic preservation project, a of the town's first meeting house, which in the past couple decades has been a church. So we are looking at the town to consider taking back that church in donation with approximately twenty five thousand dollars that will aim to get us through the first year of operations at the church, hopefully longer, while we figure out the different things that need to be figured out by the town. The hearing format and participation guidelines, you gonna be respectful, Mike? Not good. So usually, we would state that people can have up to up to three minutes to let their opinions and hearing be known. But seeing as there are two people that are not part of the presentation here this evening, we'll just go a little looser than that. If anyone has any questions, comments, or concerns on Facebook, please write them into the comments and we will do our best to get to you in a incredibly timely fashion. I started talking and we went from eleven to three.
Well, that's fact of the list. Awesome, everyone, I forgot the tens and tens of views.
Article one is the election of officers. Article two, the acceptance of reports. Patricia did a wonderful job with the annual town report, I think everyone should check it out. Article three, the roadwork agreement with the Mass DOT. Over the year, the Mass DOT does projects within the town that are not necessarily considered grants, but do need to be formally accepted. This allows the town to accept those. Article four, four allows the school to get grants without having to go back to the town for authorization of things like chapter seventy. Article five is the Holden Hospital Trust Fund, the authorization of a trust fund from the former Holden Hospital and which benefits, I believe, Chief, how many communities, three, four?
Us, that's all I really care about, I'm actually sure. It was whatever the surrounding towns around Holden, I think, could benefit off it.
And article six, the revolving fund spending limits. Uh at the last select board meeting, a few people had questions about this one. I do have an email going to you guys tomorrow with the last three years of spending all under the spending limits with one not, and I believe we should look into changing that, but I have to talk to the Board of Health about it. As well as the rental amounts for forty eight Gardner Road, so that you have a understanding of what is anticipated over the course of a year's time. What this article does is sets spending limits. The spending limits are not necessarily what is in the account or what is planned to be spent, but it is mesh general law asking the town to set a spending limit of what is perceived or conceivable. Any further questions on article six? All right. Article seven is prior year bills. Due to some staff changing and a couple other issues, there were a four, there was four hundred and fifty three dollars and thirty cents from FY twenty four left over. It is a copier bill, a Verizon bill, and an Amazon bill. I am proposing that we pay that out of free cash, which would require a nine tenth vote per Massachusetts general law. Yes, sir.
Question. Why why is there an unpaid copier invoice and a duplicate unpaid copier invoice? And why would we be paying them both?
There were questions about the legitimacy of the bills um when the lease was opened for that copier. Um and it required some investigative skills and it was proved to be legitimate, so the May and the June invoice were never paid.
When when left, twenty four or twenty three, I mean?
From FY twenty four, so May and June of FY twenty four.
A previous employee was cutting former checks to the old lease company. And once we switched over, like, we got all the money back, but it's still a a different year and we still owe them. But, cause remember last year, we changed the lease on the copiers and it was the same exact lease, but with the same exact company, but they changed their name from Leaf to First Class, First Citizen, something like that.
So so we leased this machine and what is it, a monthly payment?
Yes, well, quarterly.
Quarterly payment is one eighty three sixty nine and we missed two quarterly payments.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, article eight is the budget, if you want to take that out, I have a paper for you right in front of you. The front page is the proposed budget summary. It reviews all of the numbers at a.
Oh wait, just one, stole my papers.
At a high level, does anyone have any questions about what is written on page one, the cover?
Is this like a whole packet?
Uh that's several packets.
Okay, but there's top one, the packet, okay.
Wait, I'm gonna miss a page.
Are these numbered?
All right, that's good.
So it's one, 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 and then.
So is that the page you're talking about?
Yeah.
Thank you. I'm gonna share.
You don't need to share, I made too, I made too many.
Okay, maybe you wanted to share.
We guys can have a copy, cause I have a copy here. I, yeah, I go on. Chief. 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 Chief can have one.
Thank you.
So and without questions, I'm not going to stop and opine on things, but we will be moving through and I just want to give everyone as many opportunities to review this in a transparent manner, ask questions, the more questions there are, the better. And we'll, for those that I have not introduced her to yet, this is Samantha Shedderton. She is being proposed to be the town accountant after this, it's literally the next item on the agenda, so.
Just get the sit through, all this good stuff first, thank you for having me.
The operating budget is a eleven million eight hundred and five thousand five hundred and four dollar investment into the community. It represents a six hundred and forty six thousand dollar increase of five point eight over FY twenty five. Almost all of that, I don't have an exact number, is the school. It is a balanced approach, it has no overrides, no use of stabilization funds, and a uses a limited policy compliant use of free cash for one-time purchases within the budget. I told you about the budget philosophy last time. Uh the next page is revenue by source. Is there anyone here or at home watching on Facebook that has questions about the revenue estimates? If you'll notice, when we were first building the budget, we used supplemental funds from the agreement with Paper Cray and Cannabis to inflate miscellaneous revenue. After several concerns, both internally by our finance team and by members of the board, we removed those funds. Those funds will instead be returned to us in free cash after being paid over the course of the year. That will be a more sustainable way to invest those funds as it will not be a forever fund, it would essentially be the use of what is a one-time fund, a one-time revenue in our operating budget if we were to do it that way. Are there any questions on any of the revenues? Yes, ma'am.
Do I have to?
Your name and your address for me?
Rita Caldwell, nineteen Virges Road. In your last meeting, you were um going back and forth between a used fire truck for six hundred thousand and a new truck for eight hundred thousand, what ended up being the decision?
There's a whole conversation about that in about twenty warrant articles. That's why the chief is here, so.
We haven't got that far yet, we'll get that far.
I just didn't know if that was part of this vehicle, six hundred and forty seven thousand.
No.
Any questions on revenue? All right.
Well, yeah, I guess I got a question.
Yes, sir.
What was that number you showed on the previous slide for the total revenue?
It's eleven, I think it's eleven point something.
You just went past.
Eleven.
Down one, yeah, nope, right there.
Down, down, right there.
Eleven.
That's the total budget.
That's the total budget. The total revenue is on the cover sheet.
Okay.
So the total revenue is eleven thousand six hundred and forty nine hundred and ninety six dollars. The municipal and education budget is eleven thou- eleven million eight hundred and four thousand five hundred and four, where you plan to use the sixty five thousand dollars in reallocations from those two grants that ended up coming in in the place of town meeting approved projects and ninety eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars in free cash. You'll notice that that is down considerably from last year, but we are fortunate to be able to use those grant funds instead of free cash, which will allow us to take a serious step back into stability instead of going closer to two hundred thousand dollars and fall falling down the rabbit hole that is this type of free cash use. Any further questions on revenue? General government. General government is our finance team, the select board, the administrative operations, and the the tax collector's office, IT, building maintenance. And there is a six point four increase here. Of the majority of that increase was the transfer of twenty five thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars from the fire department's line when they were leasing forty eight Gardner Road to the building maintenance account to pay for things at forty eight Gardner Road. So whereas that looks like it is a increase of substance, it is actually a minor increase when it comes to staffing levels and that type of detail. Are there any questions in general government, which is line zero through ninety two?
This seems to be a little smaller.
When you flip it upside down, that's what threw me off. Which page did I just scrawl with?
Yeah, I I got a question on line sixteen postage, why is that going up so much?
Line sixteen postage has gone up so much because we are taking the amounts from each department that we're paying postage in sort of a piecemeal way when we were purchasing stamps and putting them all under the select board budget in in FY twenty six. It's easier than billing the different accounts. The select board account services account has gotten quite confusing, cause we've been essentially loaning the different departments money and then billing to get it back, so next year, we're just going to do all of the postage out of one account and that's the jump there.
So it's being decreased out of every department's supply line?
So that's the totality of all the postage we do cumulatively, which we weren't doing historically.
Over the course of a year.
Yep.
Cause up until we got that Pitney Bowes machine last year, we were walking across the street to get stamps. And it was easier for each department to do that on their own.
So what line were we on to, through ninety, through ninety nine?
Ninety three.
Through ninety two. All right, public safety. Public safety is thirteen point six percent of our budget. It is a total of one million six hundred and two thousand five hundred and eighty four, with the police department having a one point five percent increase, the fire department with a two percent increase, land use, community development with a twenty two percent increase. That is offset by. land use, community development with a twenty-two percent increase. That is offset by the use of grant funds to offset the part-time town planner. The part-time town planner has already aided in bringing in grant money worth almost the entire salary that we have paid him, and I look forward to working with him in the future. Another increase here is the com- combination of the administrative services coordinator, another position that has proven to be worth its weight in gold. The amount of constituent services that we've been able to increase by having a full-time person there instead of three part-time people has been incredibly noticeable. Leanne has also really stepped up when it comes to the implementation of what I've been calling Hub Connect, that computer and permitting software that we're going to be rolling out over the next year. Dispatch services went up by one point one. A side note to that, all five towns signed the, uh, dispatch agreement to enter the regional dispatch district over the last week, with our first administrative board meeting being tomorrow. I will provide an update on that meeting at your next select board meeting and send you the finalized verbiage, probably tonight, maybe tomorrow. I just got it around three o'clock this afternoon.
And how, is that me tomorrow? Is that when they're gonna also basically organize their whole thing? By, the, uh, their offices, et cetera, or is it, it's not gonna?
I don't see us doing this tomorrow, because until such time as they can actually go out and gauge this interest and work with State nine, nine-one-one, it's gonna be the same as it is, just with a different hat on. I think, so, and I will keep you in the loop, because State nine-one-one is taking this very seriously, because if it did work out, it would be the largest dispatch district in the state. We are, I'm anticipating coming forward with a proposal because we have such a sought-after treasurer collector's office that other communities want to use them for the district. So we're going to be working with the town of Rutland and the administrative board to see if there's any way to incentivize the use of the Hubbardston Treasurer Collector's Office as the treasurer collector's office for the district, but there's still some, some work to be done there before bringing it forward to the select board.
How's the treasurer feel about that?
There's discussions to be had, but I'm, uh, very appreciative that, um, I have a good name out there.
Animal controls are a contractual increase of three percent. Emergency management is level funded. I'd just like to really put a feather in Judy's cap of how much she's doing with absolutely nothing. Judy is really doing a...
I have a good question when you're done.
Yes, sir.
You showing FY twenty-six for the police department, five hundred and eleven thousand. Goes from five oh five and twenty-five to five eleven and twenty-six, and then proposed to five oh five and twenty-six. Line ninety-seven.
Chris Bergeron left after the original budget was drawn.
Yeah, but we gained a new officer.
It'll be someone that...
Much lower pay, because they're new.
Okay, alright, so that's what that is?
Yep.
Alright, thank you. I think we already went over that, but I, I have an old brain.
After some calls I received from him today, but he'd like the five eleven, but we'll...
I hear ya.
We'll work on that and just spoiler alert, expect a overage at the police department.
Now, does that include, um, they're not wearing body worn cameras yet?
Not yet.
And is, does that include the stipend for that?
Yes.
It does, thank you.
And the tree warden, that's nineteen hundred dollars, gets a stipend. I, once again, would love to see us with a tree budget because it is a nuisance, but we are really benefited by National Grid doing the level of work that they are doing and their kindness when doing said work. Any questions on public safety, which is line ninety-three through?
One sixty-seven.
One sixty-seven. All right. I'm gonna jump a little bit. I'm not. Does anyone have questions about the education budget, which is one sixty-nine through one seventy-six?
Yes. What's our confidence in the Quabin regional percent increase?
Confident.
When do they submit the, when does the final number come through? I, I guess it doesn't happen until after our meeting, right?
Yeah, it doesn't happen until after our meeting, as with every year. So right now, the house budget just finished. And usually right before the house enters their budget debate, the school will get us a number. This year, we are fortunate to not be the town that got the highest increase, so that was good. I was anticipating a nine or ten percent increase, so I was pleased, not happy, but pleased when it came in under seven. I am anticipating that it'll possibly even likely go down a little bit more, but I can't imagine it would go down to say four or five. Last year, when they started us at thirteen, it went down to nine point six, so...
And when do we, when do we get that final number?
July.
Okay.
Like, after the senate budget, they try to give us the closest to final number, and there's really no benefit in them changing after, after all the towns have voted. So the number that comes to us after the senate budget week is usually the final number, without there being some issues at town meeting or different towns causing a disturbance in voting.
That's what you're gonna call it, a disturbance in the voting?
Disturbance in the voting.
Town votes, no. Enough of the town vote, no.
What, what, I think we talked about it last time, the, the increase at Monty Tech with the increased enrollment situation?
Yeah.
Jumping students.
So, it is a giant increase this year, but last year, we dropped forty thousand dollars. So whereas it's very volatile...
Yep.
And... All right, public works, seven point eight percent of the entire budget. Any questions on between one seventy-seven and two forty-seven? Sorry, two twenty-three. I'm not sure, is there any questions coming in from what I'm assuming is a riveting crowd at home?
We're down to four people.
Four people. Thank you to the four people paying attention to what's going on in your town.
What number?
All right. Any questions on human services? Line two twenty-five through two forty-seven. The only real increase in there is a fifteen percent or a two thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollar increase to the senior center director, and that even keeps her very under the regional average for senior center directors. The town is very lucky to have Claudia in her part-time capacity doing what is essentially a full-time role.
Absolutely.
You raised your hand, Chris?
I did?
Oh yeah, that's why you did, you couldn't have been stretching.
It was unintentional, I did.
Oh, okay. Any culture in recreation? So the library, recreation. The three hundred dollar cut to the agricultural commission looks savage, but in reality, they hadn't used the three hundred dollars in a couple of years, so... Any questions about the debt or fixed cost lines? All right.
Yeah, I agree. You said we have some, some debt coming up for, the playground thing is the last, it's the last debt payment?
Yes, sir.
And it's only a small one, thirty-four thousand?
Yeah, it's thirty-four, thirty-six thousand dollars.
And then, there's nothing else coming up?
That actually comes out of CPC funds as well, directly, so...
Yeah, which it doesn't, yeah. Um, so what is the next debt? Uh, the fire truck gets paid off at when?
While the fire truck and the school roof are not, are combined together now.
Oh, that's right.
And they are not even finalized in terms of borrowing yet.
Okay.
That's why the town has almost no actual bonds.
Okay.
Thank you, because the school roof took so long to get through its process.
It's gonna need to change again, no time to get done, so... Replaced, I mean, not changed.
All right. Any questions on the budget as a whole? Any questions on the budget as a whole? All right. Thank you all very much for your questions and comments during our review of the budget. Up next, Articles nine through eleven is the school assessments and debt service for the school. Any questions from those at the table or in attendance or on Facebook about this?
Mark, just say do it.
All right. Article twelve, we had an update from Chair of the Board of Health, Kathy Hansgate, last week. We are working towards this, but this is unfortunately a bill that the town does have to pay. Should we have to continue paying for landfill monitoring?
Last year.
And mowing? We will put it back in the budget, but I am hoping that we can wash our hands of this issue.
Stop it.
It's a, a thirty-year-old landfill that has been capped for the majority of my life, and the town has to pay ten thousand dollars each year to mow it and get it tested.
Last year. It's thirty years. Worth it.
It's ridiculous.
I will bring on a special guest to talk about Article thirteen. Mary.
You're up.
Um, so I'm bringing Article thirteen forward just as my fiduciary responsibility. Um, it's an option, uh, to you guys as the select board to bring it to, uh, the residents. Um, the legal list that I'm currently investing all of our trust funds in is something that hasn't really been looked at since pretty much the nineteen eighties. Um, and it's a saturated market with us having about a third to a half of our trust funds in pharmaceuticals right now. So if we opt in for this change in the mass general law, I'd be able to invest in, um, what they call the prudent list now, so the prudent rule, so it gives me a wider stock range, um, to utilize Bartholomew to, um, invest and hopefully get a better return on those investments for the community. So, it just has to be accepted, and then, um, it does not include stabilization or CPC funds, so those stay and those are still a little bit more conservative.
Bartholomew would be picking what they think is best to go.
They still already do, yep. They complete everything based on state mandates, so even though I'm the fiduciary, they have a lot of laws that they follow that I would never be able to keep up on based on changes. So, we trust them.
It's just so the public knows, it's not you that's picking and choosing.
Yeah, it is not me individually picking and choosing. They are doing it based on all the stock market changes. And they are already handling it and have been for over a decade for the community here.
We've been stuck in the pharmaceuticals for how long?
Since we've been using them, and the legal list has been at least since the eighties. So that's what everybody has been utilizing, and this prudent investor rule has only been, um, in the last couple of years. All of us communities have started bringing it forward. I think it was twenty-two, twenty, maybe, maybe just right after COVID.
So you're recommending to expand?
Correct. Yeah, it gives us an opportunity to invest in so many other things. And, you know, COVID was great because it was kind of pushing the pharmaceuticals, so there was a good bump. But, you know, there are so many other things out there for us to be able to invest in. You don't want to get stuck in a pigeonhole, so...
Speaking of pigeonholes, it's almost that time at the library.
It is almost that time. Spring has sprung.
Article fourteen is seeking ten thousand dollars from free cash to utilize a partnership with commu- community, whatever their name, ten minutes ago.
Capital Strategic Solutions.
Capital Strategic Solutions. To work on grant development. Any questions about Article fourteen? Article fifteen and sixteen are cable access funding, PEG. It is not taxpayer funds that fund these. It is thirty thousand dollars for the annual operating budget of the cable operations and a proposal of forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars to relocate our cable operations and meeting room to Forty-Eight Gardner Road. I have quotes from the cable company to move it. I met with Handy Lou this morning to look at a few options of doing up the room. I'm going to get at least two more quotes on that. The technology, I will leave in the incredibly capable hands of Brittany. We do have a quotation from Valley Communications to do it up. What we did was we went and got the fancy quote, and we're gonna rip it apart and see what we can do.
Is this a complicated, uh, procedure or fairly, uh, easy change?
I think it depends who you are.
Huh?
I think it depends who you are and what your skill set is, and that determines the complexity of setting up a meeting room. I'm also hoping to be able to have a more multi-function furniture set over there. Like this table, as I stated before, is great, but it's a one-trick pony. This has been your public hearing table, your meeting table, your training table. So it is my hope that we will be able to utilize a set of furniture with wheels or something and move things out of the way to set up different, different meeting types.
So the room can be flexible?
Yep.
How much money is in the PEG account, or, uh, whatever that account is called, pay access?
Eighty-seven. I can get you that exact number, but it's around ninety.
How much do the low ones dry, or are they, I know they're trying to force fees upon streaming, but that's not there yet.
I have a ten-year forecast that keeps us going for the next ten years.
Okay, so it'd be okay for a little while?
Yep.
Because you know they're gonna nail the streaming service, because it's just gonna take time before they do.
Yeah, and it's taking time. And we're going to aim to get a capital grant on top of our renegotiations, but they haven't been giving any of them to any other communities. I'm not gonna take that as a no, but we're, we're gonna sure track, ask.
Ask anyway, yep. So where's that at?
It is my hope that with this, we will be able to install a switch so that people at home can watch the presentations, and the audiovisual controller will be able to bring people up and bring them back down onto the YouTube as well, so that presentations that are not in person will be more viable for those watching from home.
So in other words, you wouldn't be doing it, they'd be doing it behind the scenes, or?
We'll have to see.
Okay, how that works?
Very nice, yep.
Within the parameters of the money, because when you start talking about cable operations, forty-five thousand dollars is, is not much.
Nope. Nope.
It'd be nice to have a room that they can access because multiple occasions, they've been locked out of the police station and have been able to record meetings because there was no one there to let them in.
Yeah. Details.
And with the temporary nature of this room, everything that is purchased will be, would be purchased with the intent of utilizing it in the second largest conference room of the final project.
Yeah, and you said it was only gonna be a little amount of money to just...
Yeah, so I spoke with Spectrum, to move the cable system from over in the police department to Forty-Eight Gardner Road is just about ten thousand dollars. I asked them what it would cost if we moved it in, internally in the building. They said the lion's share of that amount is getting it from the street to the building and not necessarily in the building. They said to anticipate between five hundred and a thousand dollars to move a room in-house. Any further questions on this? All right. Article seventeen is the capital funding plan, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar plan, a hundred thousand dollars for roads, twenty thousand dollars for technology, which is being proposed that we cover it with twenty thousand dollars of grant funds, sixty-five thousand dollars for a fire department operations pickup truck, coming sixty-five... Coming sixty five from, uh, thirty five from, uh, Free Cash, thirty from the Holden Hospital Fund. And use of one-time funds will defray the costs to the taxpayer, but it's a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. Any questions on any of those projects? The tech and the roads are standing items that have been here.
Behind you first, Paul. Yes, would you again, identify yourself and?
Rita Caldwell, Nineteen Burgess Road.
Thank you.
Does that truck come with a plow?
Does that truck come with a plow?
The pickup truck, yes, if we look to purchase it with a plow, yeah.
Does that include in the price?
Yes.
Really? It's a pretty good price.
Last price we got from Colonial, um, it was the plow and the truck was specked out with things that we weren't gonna need. So hopefully it'll be a little cheaper.
Peter, you have a question?
She took care of it.
Okay. We thank you.
Eighteen through twenty are CPA articles. Article eighteen retires the playground debt, it's thirty thousand six hundred dollars, a final payment of five. Article nineteen is forty thousand dollars for a library basement rehab to, it is not a complete rehab as we discussed last time. It is cleaning up and making it useful, even though we are going to need to do more down the road.
Is that basically, is that basically the bottom, the downstairs?
Yeah, it's the, it's the downstairs.
Yep.
And the annual CPA reserve allocation limits for historic housing and open space. Article twenty one is the first meeting house acquisition. This will have its own presentation, but the parish has offered to gift the building and approximately twenty five thousand dollars to the town. Town has put a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of CPA money into this building in the last twenty years. It is a centralized part of both the town's historic fabric and the actual town center. So I do think there is a bit of a moral responsibility on behalf of the town to do what is right with this building, but there will be an entire document released in the next two weeks in this building, including a inspection by the gentleman that did the inspection for forty eight Gardner Road. And Mike actually did the entirety of the inspection with him. They were like two kids in a playhouse, I went there, they were climbing in the rafters and.
And there's going to be a, a public meeting about that, very well publicized, okay?
Yes, there is. Yep. There is going to be a public meeting.
Just make sure.
Do you want to put a steeple?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that.
That's not easy, I understand they were told us that.
It was, um, we both made it up and down, all, all limbs intact.
I did it in pair heels, it's.
Yep. Oh.
Why, why would you do that?
Well, that, um, forthcoming report, have any necessary, um, improvements in the costs associated with those improvements?
To a certain extent, like obviously we would need to get quotes and do the bidding process, but, yes. Article twenty.
Yes, Mike.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Stahl, Five Lombard Road. Um, I would just look at certain words built in seventeen seventy three. I think it was authorized and started, but it took several years. It may not have really been a, a, a u- a u- useful facility as we would think until maybe seventeen seventy five. It, it's a minor distinction, but in rebuilt, I, I think that might be, uh, rebuilt as in it was expanded. Both length and the bottom floor, the vestry is all new, it's not part of the original meeting house. So it's kind of got a chronology in its history. Tricia, you, you probably have got a chronology on what happened there. And that might be beneficial, uh, to explain what, what we look at today and what it was in seventeen seventy three are two pretty different things. But, and, and I'm a life member of the Hubbardston Historical Society, um, I still support that as a historic structure. It's just the date of which we're talking about, its history might need to evolve a little. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Isn't there, isn't there a cemetery up, up behind?
Yep.
Yes.
Is it there?
Yes.
Would we be taking that on also?
That we already own, we already own it.
We're gonna be on it. Yep.
All right, article twenty two is accepting a revised layout plan for bridge replacement. It's a five million dollar grant, including engineering. It would be foolish to not accept at this point, we've done, we've done considerable amount of support already. All right, article twenty three, I'm going to bring forth another special guest. Cause I know last week we talked about some of the costs, but this week I brought and I am happy that he was able to attend, Chief Hayes, to discuss any questions you may have regarding this article.
This is the article she was asking for, too. This is the article dealing with the fire truck. Okay, yeah, so you know, it's all yours.
Does anybody have any questions?
Is that what it actually looks like?
Yes, I have a question.
That's the truck, yes.
Okay.
Is that Kenworth?
Uh, it's a Fowl.
Looks like a freight line.
I, I don't, not sure that it's a chassis, I think it might be a frail, I don't know.
That's what you're gonna purchase?
This exact picture here is what the truck was like, other than that.
Yeah, that looks like, that doesn't look like.
It's a Fowl, it's who manufactures the tanker.
So when we were discussing, you know?
Yes.
So when we were discussing this at, over on the other side here, um, you know, we were talking, we were talking with two different fire trucks, right? We had.
Kenworth.
Whatever, whatever the word, I can't, I.
You can't recollect, but.
It's a commercial, I think the word you.
I mean, I remember asking the question, um, are we comparing apples to apples here with these fire trucks? And the response was you're comparing apples to crab apples. So with that being said.
Well, that was Kathy Casey's, which he does, well, represent the fire department myself well. That was his terminology, maybe not exactly what I would do.
Okay.
For analogy, my.
So, I mean, based on that discussion and that decision, I think we decided to go for the more expensive fire truck, which in turn was going to last longer, be more durable, do what you folks needed it to do, be a better purchase. And in the long run, it would be, you know, the right decision to make, given its extended longevity and whatnot. Um, then last meeting, I found out we were going for, you know, the less expensive model. Yeah, so I'm wondering, why did we switch? And is there, is, is there more value in the more expensive model? Is it gonna, you know, you wanna, you wanna get the most bang for your buck, right? Are we going cheap because we don't have the money? Or should we buy, spend a little more money and get a truck that's gonna last us twice as long? Or a third longer or something?
Yeah, I think it's multiple factors. Um, in my opinion, I think it would be very difficult for, I mean, let's look at, the analogy I would use is, why are we at forty eight Gardner Road right now? We tried multiple attempts to get a public safety building, a senior center, brand new buildings. They're very expensive and it didn't pass, so we went to an alternative that came to us. This is an alternative. Does it suit all the needs? No, but it encompasses the majority of them, which is getting water to fires. That carries three thousand gallons of water, the truck we have right now only carries twenty five hundred. It's a little bit shorter, a little bit not as tall, a little more maneuverable. It doesn't have, Engine Two right now has a six man cab, this is only, um, excuse me, six person cab. This is a two person cab, um, staffing isn't like what it used to be. So this can do the majority of the job, I would say probably close to eighty percent. If it's the first dude, then that's when it becomes first on scene at a fire. It doesn't have all the equipment you'd ideally want, but you could have mutual aid coming. So if Engine One, which is our first new truck, was down and this was second in line, it wouldn't be ideal, but it could still start fire suppression while other trucks show up. This truck right here, there's two of them right now, they're twenty twenty four models. Um, I talked to the rep today, he said he might be able to secure it where we can lock in that price. It's four nine nine nine, it's just under a half million. Um, my concern i- in, if we go with the one point one million dollar truck, it's a debt exclusion, the town's not putting any of its own money in. If it doesn't pass, it puts it off another year. If it does pass this Ja- uh, July, or at the June meeting, and we go out for it, the rep right now is saying it's two and a half to three year build time. You're not gonna see this truck until January of twenty twenty eight, or July of twenty twenty eight. That's what they're.
If you're lucky. If you're lucky.
That's what they're, yes, that's what they're projecting. That doesn't mean that the projections won't change in the future. Um, tariff thing doesn't seem such as, is gonna be as bad, but that could be something that impacts the cost and the, uh, time that we get it. Um, right now, the Kern Engine Two has a lot of rust under it. Uh, Jeremy was just down there, he has some pictures of it. It's a C-channel frame, the frame is starting to separate where it comes together, it's pressed together. I don't think this truck's gonna make it another three years. Um, and I don't think a one point one million dollar ass is going to pass. And if it doesn't, you're just pushing it off. Um, so I think in my opinion, this is what I'm proposing, that's mostly the pass. Minimize the cost to the taxpayers and still give us something immediately. If we don't get the twenty twenty four model, the twenty twenty five would take about six months to get in this version. It looks like, almost like this truck, there's a few different things on it, but, and that would go up from five hundred to five seventy five for the twenty, uh, twenty twenty five model, so, um.
At today's market price.
Right now, yeah. So if you miss out on the two tw- uh, twenty twenty fours, then the price is gonna jump seventy five plus.
I have no issue with the twenty four, twenty five. The only thing, like, we talked about at the last time, we, we had this discussion was, you know, we were told that basically the difference is the million dollar truck is a custom truck, correct? So it's all hand made by this fire company that builds these fire engines, right?
Yeah.
So this truck, it's a commercial grade chassis, it's made by Kenworth, right?
Yep.
So the only difference is you got a commercial chassis compared to a custom made chassis.
Yep.
Not a big deal in my mind. The only thing is the life of both of those trucks is about the same?
Well, I know somebody at that meeting said it was longer for the custom life.
Right, which.
But in my experience, we had a, uh, KME that was on the international, um, that was our Kern Engine One. Uh, replaced that in two thousand nineteen. And that truck was built or delivered to town in ninety two or ninety three. So that gave us twenty something years of, why, I worked, I think it worked out to like twenty three years of service.
So what are you looking?
I don't, you're not, I don't see a custom truck, well, this is a custom truck here, Engine Two. And I think if you, it might make it another year or two, so you're talking about twenty five years and you're pushing it, so.
Even when we talked about the borrowing, I think the useful life difference was only within a five year time range, so.
Yeah. And then you get into the thing, whereas then it's, you're pushing it off the three years and Engine Three needs to be replaced sooner than later.
Yep.
So now we're pushing things off and.
Now you need two trucks all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, size wise, it, that, will this fit in Station One?
Yes, it's smaller than the existing Engine Two, shorter and a few inches, uh, shorter in height and in length.
But it carries more water.
Yes.
Yep.
So that's basically the same as the one in Westminster?
Five hundred and four gallons.
Cause I saw theirs packed outside.
Yes, yeah.
I liked it, I mean, that was actually a nice looking truck, so. I don't care what they look like, as long as they function like they should.
Yeah.
Mike?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mike Stahl, Five Lombard Road. And through the chair, question for the chief. If you were to put it in its simplest terms, you prefer a bird in the hand that they are sitting ready to go than the unpredictability of the future?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would rather ensure that we have three thousand gallons of water with some hose, ladders to go than waiting for two and a half, three years and not know. Maybe, they said it might be even longer, and that puts the truck at almost twenty nine years. And I just, I don't think it's gonna make it.
Yeah, thank you, chief, thank you, Mr. Chair.
One, I got one more quick.
Behind you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Rita Caldwell, Nineteen Burgess Road, is this new truck, is it new or is it used?
It's new.
And does it have the equipment that they really need?
Yes. Yeah, it wouldn't have everything you need for a, we call it first dude, the first engine to arrive to a fire. But that's our Engine One, we go to the fire first. Engine Two, uh, the tanker, this truck, our Engine Two currently, is a second piece on scene supplying water to that first truck. The first truck only has a thousand gallons of water on it, and our, the tanker has twenty five hundred gallons. That buys us a little time to either get more tankers from area towns or to lay five inch supply line to the nearest water hole, which we can go up to about three thousand feet, um, to the nearest water. So I say if it's further than that, then we do tanker shuttles. So in a fire, you could be, you know, using anywhere from two hundred to four, almost five hundred gallons a minute. That thousand gallons doesn't last long, you get three thousand, it buys you a little bit more time. And then after that, hopefully you have more tankers and supply lines. Um, so this would do that job, it's just a little bit more limited in the hose and how it's laid out, you don't have a lot of options. And some of the, it's limited in its compartment space, so it wouldn't have all those tools. But the first truck would have that, the third truck coming in, our Engine Three, would have those additional tools and ladders and additional hose, so.
And you have five inch hoses and not the four?
Well, our attack lines are inch and three quarter lines. Our supply line is a five inch diameter hose that we lay in the road to water sources that a fire engine will set in and pump, cause we don't have them, we just want a source, so we have to draft all the water.
It would work on like the fire ponds?
Yeah, they're called, yeah, they're, they're called dry hydrants, the white hu- white pipe coming up.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it's like.
Mm-hmm.
How do you, like, you run up out of town, you'll see a white pipe, that's called a dry hydrant.
Mm-hmm.
I just learned it a couple of weeks ago, so.
But the thing is, if our Kern Engine Two fails between now and projected three years to build a truck, or if it's not voted on and fails, because one point one million, that's, I think it's sticker shock to the people of Hubbardston. Um, even though it really probably shouldn't be the way prices have gone up and everything, it's just the fact of life. But I think we have a chance at a half million dollars passing. A million plus, I don't, and that, where are we at, and I were another year behind. So this was on the plan for twenty twenty five, I moved into twenty twenty four. We look to get our money to replace this truck, and the time just keeps going by and nothing's getting done, so we need to do something.
Peter?
So my last question is, um, brain fart. Um. I can't take it right now.
I have a question from Facebook.
Oh, no, I, I got it, uh, let me just take a sec quick. So you said for, s- s- what did you say the price of this truck is, the twenty twenty four?
Four ninety nine.
It's just the, yeah.
So say five hundred.
It's five hundred.
Yeah, and can you lock that in pending vote at town meeting?
I'm trying to do that now.
Okay.
Uh, the way I discussed it with Nate was the law, asked for six hundred, not to exceed. Because if I can't get to twenty twenty four, then the, that's five seventy five and change for the twenty five.
When would you know if we could get that? Or say, you know, we lock in the price of that pending the vote.
The sales rep was supposed to be sending over some paperwork today, and he never sent it.
Well, I'd get on it tomorrow.
I think he could, yeah.
I mean, cause that's important, right?
Yeah, and well, it's, I mean, it's difficult, I was surprised there actually. And well, it's, I mean, it's difficult, I was surprised they're actually agreeing to it. I mean, we're pretty good customers, so, but they're, they understand the situation. It's not, like, we have the ki- money in the capital plan for it.
Right.
So I told them that, you know, it's, there's a chance we won't get that funding. So if they hold it for us, you know, there's time where they're not selling it and making money off of it. Cause they're gonna have to wait and then find another potential buyer.
Essentially, if we're asking them to hold it for roughly three weeks.
As a, as a good customer to do, and they did that for us with the ambulance.
Yeah.
Um, the, the last ambulance we got, it was a demo, he showed it to us in May, and that was a little bit different because the funding was coming out of the capital plan, and half of it was upper. So I knew there was money available, and I knew it would go through in the capital plan. So they were more assured that they were, the deal would go through. But they were still taking a chance, but they were willing to hold it then, and it seems like they're gonna willing to hold one of these twenty twenty fours for us.
But I, I mean, they're not busting down the door for a twenty-four model, and we're in year twenty-five, right? And they got two of them, you said?
Yeah.
And they're still there?
Well, as of, well, actually, as of, uh, not even two months ago, they had five of them, so.
Well, I mean, I, I would say, uh, you know, see if you get on the phone with them tomorrow, see if you'll make, you know, say-
Hey, he said, he said he was, so I assumed that something would come in, he just didn't say it.
Tell them we want the truck, I mean, I'm, pending voter turnout, right, voter, on the voter, so.
Tricia?
Mark Fleischer, Fleischer from Plum Tree Lane asks, how many full-time firefighters and part-time firefighters do we have? What is the life expectancy of the proposed fire truck?
Um, I would say easily over twenty years. We tend to push it here in Hubbardston, you're not supposed to go that far with this apparatus. With uh, NFPA, it's supposed to be, I forget the actual time schedule, but if you go after twenty, I believe you're supposed to have them in a backup role. But yeah, over twenty years of service to the town, and we have, uh, four of us currently, or five positions is four of us currently. We should be hiring another one, that, uh, open position, so there's five full-timers, and there's twelve of us total. So eleven, I do a math on that rate, nine, nine call guys, currently.
Thank you.
So that truck would bring us right to decarbonization, twenty fifty?
There you go.
We're about, then you get the battery truck, well, we won't be here, though.
I won't be though.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Rita Colwell, nineteen Burgess Road. Um, if we got more money towards the truck, is there any equipment that needs to be replaced that some of this money can go towards?
Um, yeah, always, I don't have any, I, when it comes to this stuff, you try to make it as, you know, bare bones. I mean, some towns, communities, they do that, they stack on all equipment that needs to be replaced. But that starts bringing it up by, you know, tens of thousands of dollars. Um, and where this is a dead exclusion, I wanna make it as powerful as possible to making sure it goes through the first time. Um, we've done this before, a few years ago, um, actually, probably a little more. I couldn't find it today, it was like two thousand fifteen, sixteen. Uh, we tried to do a dead exclusion for an engine, uh, it failed by quite a number of votes, I don't recall. I would say like sixty-five or seventy. The ambulance was listed for that, uh, on its dead exclusion, that failed by two votes. So the next year, we went after the ambulance, again, it passed. Um, and then we found the used military truck that took the place of Engine Four that we were trying to replace, um, cause it didn't fa- it didn't pass, and Engine One was coming up. You had the two trucks, you had Engine Three and Engine One, they're all coming up at the same time. Um, and at that time, the select board said, it's only a matter of like three years difference, you go, you gotta pick one. So that's why we have a military truck, so.
And it gets a lot of use.
Anything else on this particular article? Nate, go ahead.
All right. We did talk about this last week, any further questions on the DPW plow truck? Article twenty-five, DPW brush mower, any further questions on this?
Can we sell the old truck? There's a question.
Which old truck? The plow truck or the fire truck?
Any of them, I guess.
They go to auction.
Do they?
Yeah.
Municipal, municipal?
I believe the plan with the mower would be to use the other one until it's in the ground.
Well, yes, I, I have heard that many times.
So my only question, Nate, is on the, on this brand-new mower, this isn't the, this isn't the rental one?
Nope.
This is a straight-out purchase?
Yep. After that meeting on January twenty-first,
Yeah.
I restructured the plan. Should this not go through, we will be back at talking about a, a lease, but-
But we're still without a mower? Or a mower that's on its last leg? So why, why couldn't, so you only can have, you can't have, you know, let's vote this, vote that, you gotta vote for one or the other? I mean-
It would have been convoluted.
Yeah.
Like, it would, it would have been confusing.
So we're not talking lease anymore?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
That is the estimated increase if all one million dollars were to pass?
So, Peter, you're six hundred thousand dollar home.
Yeah.
Eighteen to twenty-four bucks quarterly.
I can handle that, I have to give up some Celsius or something.
Plow, would you like your house to burn down? Or do you wanna get into a car accident, cause you can't see around the corners, cause the brush mower is shit? Which, or, or you go driving into the snowbanking because the, you know, the road was blocked?
I have my own plow.
I'm just saying.
All that Japanese knot wood coming up, they need that brush mower.
Obviously, our needs far outweigh, are outnumbered, the ability to-
I, listen, I am the last one that wants to vote to increase my tax base, but we're in dire need of equipment.
No question, yep.
So with the last few articles, I can either, I was expecting Chris Monroe this evening, and he is not in attendance. I will ask the planning board to treat their meeting on Thursday as a public hearing for all of these, or I can do my best to read the town planner's memo into the record. I think we should just wait on-
Is he in the meeting on teams?
No. No one's in there.
Okay.
Chief?
While you're here? Just over here.
Okay. Can I?
Bad angle.
Any battery energy storage? We got the equipment to handle that? Fire?
No.
Okay.
The problem right now, and I do not want to go deep into this because I'm not educated on the entirety of the discussion, right now, we're more open to someone being able to put a large-scale battery energy storage system in than we would be under this. This puts it in a, in zoned, in more regulated areas versus wherever.
So this is, we're fixing, this is basically state mandated what we're fixing with this?
The first time the town of Hubbardston approved this, they were told they were being too, too strict, too strict.
Yeah, and right now, we're wide open.
Yeah.
Until we get this.
I thought they were getting rid of the whole tier thing because the tier one was like what people would have on their house. Did they have their second meeting? I might, I might have missed it. No, they haven't had their second public meeting yet? Okay, cause I saw the first one.
On Thursday night.
Okay, all right. Cause they were talking about getting rid of the tier one, cause that's why it failed on the floor last year, because of the tier, the tiers. The smaller tiers are basically-
And Mark and Tim have been involved in this from the-
Yes, yeah.
Do you know if, uh, the planning board has any, uh, intention or, or choice of words at the town meeting? Somehow simplify the explanation to the people because this, the, the packet itself, there's nothing but technical stuff.
No, in, in your, in, in your packet, item four.
Contain each other. Where's Alec in that? Is that what you're saying? Uh, I don't see Alec.
It says memo, yeah.
Says memo, oh, right there, yep, right there.
So, Mr. Chair, in your, not now. In your packet is just that, it's a memo from the town planner reviewing the four zoning articles on three pages. So we have that ready to rip now, and it-
So, no, I'm glad because it's, it's highly technical, et cetera, and so forth, and you start throwing that at your people sitting to vote.
I will request that either at your next meeting, you are going to be expected to take a recommendation vote for each of the items. I will see if Mr. Monroe can come to that meeting to present on these ahead of that discussion slash vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that, if there's no questions on the warrant as a whole, that is it for my second and final public presentation of the annual town meeting season in twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Where is that, Nate, where is that, um, three-page, did they have the memo about the battery storage?
So if you go to your SharePoint. The whole thing is there, it's huge.
Yeah, the whole thing's there, but-
It's co- it's totally there, Chris, but it's lengthy, so.
No, he just said he had a three-page.
Yeah, go to, go to your SharePoint page.
Where, where, what are they talking about?
For this?
Is the one down?
That one?
Yes.
I don't know. That.
That's a green button, that's a full, okay.
All right, so this is your SharePoint page. Okay, that's your meeting, this is the annual town meeting public documents, could you click that?
No. I don't care, I said no.
Sit in here. Page doesn't work.
Try deleting your done move, in case. Just wanna refresh.
Mark himself in the ground.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to the consent agenda, it keeps going, article, et cetera, or?
Right, there's a whole bot, like, right there.
Chris, and it's, it's also on the, on the homepage of the Town of Hubbardston webpage. I guess with Peter using the restroom, I will take the time to tell those at home about this. If you go to the Town of Hubbardston webpage, there is a number of links. One of them has a gavel, it's a town meeting gavel, so you click it. And in there, it's all of the town meetings of the past. And, but there's one that hasn't happened yet. And if you click that one, it's all of the information about the annual town meeting that is upcoming, including a public documents drive. And in the public documents drive is all of the information about our capital plan, including quotations and that type of documentation. The regional budgets from Monty Tech, the dispatch center, and the Quabon Regional School District. All of the documents mentioned here tonight, a link to the really, really good Town of Hubbardston budget webpage.
Just sell it a little more.
And, and more, and, and Chris, in what I was going to, is the, the three-page memo from the town planner.
Just sell it.
We're all gonna do that, though.
Add, add some flair. Be fun.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, with that, I am complete.
All right. Uh, is anyone here for open session? Okay, I don't see anyone. I'll go over the items for, for the consent agenda, and if anyone has a question or a hold on that at the end, just let me, let us know. Uh, on the administrative matters, we have a one-day liquor license garden ale houses requesting a permit to serve alcohol at the Hubbardston Fair on June seventh, twenty twenty-five. Carries all necessary insurances and service certifications. Election slash town clerk, accept the board of registrar's recommendations to opt in the early in-person voting for the annual town election, with voting to occur May thirty-first through June fifth, twenty twenty-five, at the town clerk's office. We also have an election town clerk public notification of key election deadlines and information voter registration deadlines, early voting by mail process, office relocation and timeline for mailing ballots. Uh, we, on the personnel, we have, uh, an appointment, Isaiah McDaniel, uh, DPW, uh, to the cemetery?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. His rate is sixteen fifty-six per hour. Uh, are there any questions or holds on that? If there aren't, I would appreciate a motion for unanimous consent of the consent agenda.
Sell load.
Second.
Motion made in second. Unanimous consent, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, moving to, uh, new business. Uh, you've waited a long time for this.
She's still here, it hasn't run away, so.
And that's before we have haunted or something?
Yeah, yeah.
No, welcome. Appointment of the, uh, town accountant, Samantha Chatterton, okay? And basically, that just requires a, a motion?
Yep, but let, let's do our thing.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Sam for coming here today. She did very well in her interview with Mary and I that took place the week before last. We hit it off right in the meeting, we were very impressed with her knowledge base of both municipal government in general and the world of accounting. She is not currently actively in the world of finance, but was itching to get back into it. This is a role that Sam will be doing part-time. It will not be virtual or anything like that, but she will not have a regular office over there. With her only being from the region, it will be easier to get her here for meetings. It'll be easier to set up a one-on-one with a department instead of a virtual meeting. We have discussed different options of how we could do this, but at the end of the day, the bottom line was, if it works, it works. We are looking to update a lot of the processes that have been going on and working towards with the accountant, and it is, I'm really looking forward to being able to have a more updated and streamlined accounting process. It's a little bit weird to say, as our previous accountant was virtual, but we really were running a paper-heavy process with a virtual accountant. It was not something that the town was ready for in twenty twenty-one, nor now. I am hoping that Sam, with her wealth of experience, will be able to hit the ground running and with our finance team really straighten things up quickly and work towards betterment rather than catching up and being reactive year after year after year. So with that, I'll give Sam a moment, like, to speak to you. Other than that, I do heavily recommend the appointment of Smith and Chatterton, Chatterton, Chatterton?
Yeah, first one.
Chatterton, to the position of part-time town accountant. Up to, and we've been saying up to on purpose, up to twenty hours a week. Okay?
Okay.
Um, so like Nate said, it, it was a really good interview. I've been in municipal government going on a decade now, seven years of which was municipal accounting. So I was assistant town accountant, I did a one-year role as treasurer. Uh, no offense, God love him, didn't like that end of it as much. Uh, I worked for a city as finance director for a bit, didn't like the commute, so I kinda stayed to the smaller towns. Um, last couple of years, I did some grant writing, and then I ended up being promoted to the assistant town administrator. But I really, really want to keep the municipal finance- But I really, really want to keep the municipal finance close on my resume, so it's kind of, I don't know, I get these ideas. I saw this opportunity and I see it as a way where there's no guarantees, you know, I do have a primary role. But I wanna help if I can help a smaller community and still keep that close to my resume, you know, keep that experience close. And I, I was telling Nate and Mary, oh, and one of the deciding factors to actually getting me to send my resume in was I was working with my boss on the budget and it was taking me a while to pull a report and I couldn't figure out. I could, but it was taking me much longer than it used to. I used to live in the accounting system day in, day out. You know, you could essentially do it with your eyes closed. You just had it down to a routine. And that little lag that I was suffering where it was like, what is wrong with my brain? Why I used to be able to do this in, you know, a matter of seconds. Um, that was the deciding factor to say, you know what, let me talk to them. Let me see what they're looking for and I guess let's see if we can make it work, so. And I'm, I'm confident we can.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Anyone have any comments or questions before we get the motion?
When's the start date if we vote it?
Technically today, but there isn't much you'd be able to do today.
Yeah, right.
So.
So next year hit the ground running or after the town meeting?
Sooner than that, like.
Oh, really?
Unfortunately, I do believe we're going to have to, without talking about it too much, I think we're going to have to bring Sam's pay to the finance committee.
Yeah.
Which I, as I stated before, is a personnel matter that I will get into with any member of the board.
Yep.
Should you wish, just please reach out off
Mm-hmm.
off the meeting record as it is a personnel matter.
All right, then could we have a, a motion to appoint Samantha Chatterton as the town, the new town accountant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye, yes.
As opposed? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick, now you can run. This far.
Well, it's nice to be able to see a person and looking at a screen. That's how I feel, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you gotta do what you gotta do, but I can understand. I can understand if you can't make it, but it's so nice to have a person available to speak to.
It's just easier being, you know, I, I know, I told them I'm not a huge fan of Zoom. I would prefer a phone call, but that face-to-face, interactional, it's important.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, it's more effective, too.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Next item is the annual town meeting warrant. The, if there's any discussion or questions, what we did basically have to do is to move to, to sign it and then we'll be signing it before we go leave tonight. So is there anything else to say about that from anybody?
No.
That one.
I mean, she's there. She's gonna have to stay, right?
Okay, we're al, we're almost done.
Oh, okay.
Good, we have a motion then to, uh, sign the annual town meeting warrant for June second, twenty twenty five as presented.
So moved.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye, yes.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under all business.
Nothing.
We have, um, ETA report?
Uh, I pretty much covered everything while talking about the budget. Uh, Mary is taking a HR course on Fridays, her day off. So I do thank her for that. I, it's the same one as I took last year to say it's good, so congratulations. I look forward to you getting your certificate and the improvements that we can make together in the HR functions of the town. Our entire HR team is right here.
Huge.
And other than that, things are going all right. There should be some transfers after we can get Sam on board and get things figured out. I should be able to come forward with transfers now that we are after May. So look forward to some finance talk to end of year.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, moving on, policies to review? There aren't any that I'm aware of?
Not this evening, sorry.
Correct. Matt is not recently anticipated chair. Do we, I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything?
I got some.
Yeah, I got a couple.
Um.
Wait, 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 wait.
Hold on, she's gotta get the right color pad.
Okay, I'm ready.
So earlier tonight, I found out the well pump at the rec field is not working. When did that happen? And why hasn't it been fixed yet?
Two years ago.
I thought they fixed it. No?
I don't know. I don't think so.
Did they fix it?
Let me get back to you on that, Chris.
Okay.
Maybe it was a year ago. I don't know.
Cause the water was, no, the water was spraying. Remember last year? I went down there and the water was spraying and I managed to turn it off.
Cause it was leaking.
I was, I was down in this park with Jesse less than a week ago. Me, Jesse and Hunter went to the park and there was no mention of that. So let me get back to you on that.
Well, that was.
Yeah, I, I could be wrong.
To be, to be clear, there's, there's a new irrigation system, filtration system down there. Are we confusing that with a well pump or is it definitely two different items?
Are you talking about when Katie said the park, the irrigation system wasn't working at the park two years ago?
I thought you said for two years.
Yeah, but that's not the pump. It's the actual system. There's something wrong with the system.
There was an issue with the irrigation system a while back.
Okay, let, let's start over.
Okay.
Um, there's a brand new irrigation system underneath, underneath the van stand. Which is day-to-day, brand new, no maintenance. I found that out when I went down to change filters a couple few months ago and the whole system I used to use is gone. So there's a new irrigation system under there.
Yes.
Which runs off of the well pump. If the well pump isn't working, then the irrigation system isn't working. You know what I mean?
I have no knowledge of the well pump not working.
Who told you the well pump's not working?
I thought I heard that earlier tonight. I said it earlier.
No.
Yeah. I don't know. I thought, did they ever change the pump?
No. Yeah, I thought so like a couple years ago.
Okay. Well, then the only thing that wasn't working is that filter system that was installed was leaking that day.
Yeah, they were having, they didn't turn the irrigation on last year. I know they did.
My information could be bad, so don't listen to me.
Because it's the irrigation, the water, are you speaking about the water softening system? Cause that's the new thing that's down there, correct?
It's a filtration system, but yeah, that's the new, that's the new thing that's down there.
Okay, filtration. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
To my knowledge, the water at the field is working.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will.
I'll retract my statement.
Can you go by at four thirty tomorrow morning to see if the sprinklers are up and running, please?
That's when they run?
If it ever stops raining, then we can turn it on, put a lolo out of here.
Yeah.
It's, did somebody actually turn it on?
It should be on. It should.
Yeah.
It.
Did, does, did White Turf come up and maintain it like he does every?
Possibly not yet, but.
If it's that old company, that guy retired. Jesse met with somebody new.
Yeah.
Because the old company retired. She was telling me, uh, like, I don't know what, cause she was asking me who to call. I'm like, I don't know.
If we could use this as an example of the type of things that can very quickly unravel when we are, when we say things without one hundred percent truth or fact behind them and please.
Can you, can you track down the details on this and let me know?
Yeah. Yep.
Um, second question. Um, are there any cell vendors on the tower yet?
On the tower over there?
Yeah.
We're working on it. I've been reached out to by Verizon.
Oh, yeah.
And I, after that, connected back with Mike Moriarty because they were s- not acting super quickly because when we put out the original request, no one responded.
Yeah.
So we were not quick to put out a second request until there was some interest. Now that Verizon reached out again, the Michael Moriarty is working on the RFP. Uh, the soon-to-be former town administrator of Rutland and I wrote the RFP for him last summer, so it's up to him to get it out.
And it's, it, we can get two vendors up there, right?
Yes.
And what'd you say it was?
Verizon has reached out with potential interest. They obviously.
And they're the only ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, uh, public press, I don't see any. Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Uh, next meeting is May nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you all. Thank you.